All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We have some guests. You want to introduce yourself and tell us who you are?
My name is Robert McLealmond.
He's here to answer questions regarding the survey.
Okay, great. And that's, we're going to cover that as you go through the agenda today. And anyone else? Okay. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting of June 1st. Has everyone had an opportunity, board members, to look at the minutes? And are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Strange to be in this little crowded room. Not used to this, it's been over a year. Okay, next, we have a presentation, we put that up front on the meeting today. And so Kathy, you are ready to go?
I'm just ready to go.
This is going to be our senior services, I need that desperately. So ladies, there you go.
Okay, first of all, hi, I'm Kathleen Christie, I'm the manager of the adult services department, and we are happy to come and talk to you. First of all, how did you recognize any of these pictures?
That's Tom Taylor, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, that's David. Do it again.
It's a bad picture, but...
Now, who is that? You all are sneaky.
Okay, Tom Taylor, Tabe Dugan.
I need a picture of that.
Susan Snijmuller, that was a tiny picture, so. Marge Black.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Don Reagan. Ed Mitchell.
Doesn't even begin to look like it.
Kathy Johnson. So, so these all came out of our archive, your book, in our archives with all kinds of wonderful things there. And Judith, we can turn on to the other one now. So first of all, thank you again for letting us talk. And I'm gonna...
It's gonna be a long meeting anyway, so we don't care.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to add to your boredom. Let me introduce those of our team who are here tonight. Brennan, who will also be speaking, Melinda, and Sheila. These are all fantastic people who help, who help our patrons. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm sorry if I talk too fast or if I rush, I am nervous. And I'm trying to, we do so much, and it's gonna be hard to limit it to 10 minutes, but we are gonna try. And we're very excited to tell you all about this. Now, the adult services department is in a unique position and offers many, all she missed her picture. We offer many different services to this community. However, what we basically do, what we do basically comes down to interacting and responding to patrons and providing services to them. For instance, how many of you have a phone? Okay. When you first got it, did you intuitively know how to use it? Did you know right off the bat, you know, opening the box? Okay, so did you have to ask someone or go to an online manual? We have people coming to us all the time saying, "I don't know how to use this, what do I do?" Whether it's how to use Libby or how do I use my tablet? What do I do, how, what's my password? They'll come and ask us. They'll say, "How do I use Libby? How do I apply for this job? How do I run a, run my credit report?" All those kinds of things. And we do our best to help them, and almost always we can. I'm not gonna say we're perfect, but almost always. Now, so that was technical. We answer a lot of reference questions. We are the reference department. And sometimes these questions can be answered quickly, but other times they require in-depth and off-depth time. People want help in finding information on library resources, community resources, non-library resources, online resources, and who knows, who knows what else? Last, during the COVID year, if all the people who have asked us reference questions stood in one line, social distance apart, that line would go out to the airport. It's 4,500 questions this last COVID year. The year before, at the same time, before COVID, if they, if all the people who asked their questions stood in one line at the same time, the line would go 16 miles, almost out to Neyland Stavey. And this is what we do here. So I'm gonna show you some of the questions that we get. I never knew that was there. Again, these are actual real life questions that we have got. Now, a well-known author, you would know him, I'm sure, Dylan. Google will bring you 100,000 answers, a librarian will bring you the right one. So you get the idea of what we're doing here. Okay, with the help of our friends, we have created programs for our patrons. Every program we do address literacy, which people need to succeed in the 21st century, such as basic literacy, digital literacy, informational literacy, and health literacy. For instance, Focus on Seniors is a program for the older population. It provides timely information that's not easily consumable and not available elsewhere. One area that has been remarkable and created many spinoffs, one of our programs is the Southern Appalachian Lecture Series. One of our professional part-time librarians, Linda Marcus, has developed a program that regularly had 80 to 200 people attend. Some of the monthly programs are intellectual, some are down home, some talk about our local environment, but they all focus on the Southern Appalachian area, its history and culture. Here are some of the flyers that we've used with the topics. You get the idea. Okay, and her, the Southern Appalachian Lecture Series has been so innovative and so successful, it has sparked spinoffs. Foothill Voices is a program that publishes books of stories, articles written by amateur local authors. Brennan, right here, Linda, and Jennifer, who used to work here, have presented at state and national conferences about, about it. We are so proud of them, and we're so, we're just so proud of, proud of all of this. We have had a clothing day. This was our slogan. And you know what, that's true. Some of our other things that we do here, we started, Melinda started Storytime for Grown Ups, it's on Zoom. We have focused on seniors, we have had adult coloring. Now, that's been paused because of, because of COVID, but one of the projects that we do, we take care of the magazines back in reference. And with that, after we buy them and catalog them and make them available for people, we have to get rid of them. And so this is just one of many parts, it feels like thousands of parts. And that's Adam, who is working on them there. So it was a natural progression for Sheila Pennekaugh, who loves gardening and has an interest in heritage seeds, who is one, another one of our creative professional part-time librarians, to create the Seed Library of the Way to Grow Appalachian Heritage Seeds. Last year, I'll wait till we get there. She's had speakers here, she has the Seed Library, make sure you look at it. This is a nationally known author and heritage gardener who works at Blackberry. And he spoke here. Last year, we had 2,000 seed patterns to garden. We are literally feeding Blount County. Sheila, can you elaborate a little bit?
Sure. I wanted to pass these out to you. This is an article, we were interviewed about our Seed Library in a National Publication Farm World, if you want to read that. And then this is our brochure, has our mission statement and our seed protocols and different things about the seed libraries, if you want to take one of those. This is our catalog, it's so cute and adorable. It was painted by a local artist, Amy Campbell, she's also the host of Tennessee Farm Tape. And she has interviewed us about the Seed Library a couple of times, and she's been just a great partner. So you might want to take a look, we've got, this, this isn't all of our seeds here. This is what we put out for the public, but we also have a stockpile of seeds. We got a grant from Slow Food Tennessee Valley, I always forget their name, and we bought a freezer, so we have a freezer to store our seeds in during the time that we're not open. And just a little bit about the history of the Seed Library, it was born out of a Southern Appalachian Studies program. We had a Southern Appalachian Heritage Seed swap. And people loved it, they brought tons of seeds, and they just kept bringing seeds to me at the desk, week after week after week. And I thought, what am I gonna do with all these seeds? I can't, I'm a gardener, but I can't garden, my yard's not this big. So we talked to the master gardeners, Blount County master gardeners, and we partnered with them and we started the Seed Library. And we opened March the 1st, 2018. So this is our third year, and it's promoted a lot of goodwill in the community. We're helping people recognize the heritage seeds that, you know, their great-grandparents grew. And people stopped saving seeds after a while, so we don't want to lose that great biodiversity of our culture here. And seeds are really our living history. So it's, it's done well. We, we've been interviewed by WBIR, WATE, and the Daily Times, that just ask anybody to hate being interviewed.
She does excellently.
I like, you know, they always, it never fails, they call on a day, you're having a really bad air day. And of course, we had her, I passed out the articles, so. And if you guys ever have any questions, feel free to come by the desk and chat about seeds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, and if this is not enough, a huge component, component of adult services, local history. Our future is based on our past. One of the things we do is preserve articles from the newspaper. Linda Kirby, that's something that she does, and we keep it in the bird profile, which is shelves and shelves, drawers and drawers. Okay, we have a cool project that A.J. Rowe is working on, is preserving Judge Blount cartoons. Do you remember? They have been donated to us, they came in a huge box with this in and shoeboxes, and just all of these tossed in there. So he has been organizing them and putting the data on it, metadata, whether it's family or economics or farming or politics, and making those available on our digital virtual library. And please, look at these at some point. And he is, that's A.J., we're doing old map preparation and saving them. And, and like I said, our future is based on our past. Brennan has wonderful things to tell us. Do you want here?
Do you care?
I do not mind at all.
I'm Brennan McQuire, I've been at the library for, since 2008, I've been full-time for the past three years. One of the things I've worked with a lot is the local history and genealogy collection. And before I worked here, I didn't know there was a local collection. But we have over 7,000 items, and we've got books, journals, maps, microfilm reels with witnesses on Blount County and Southern Appalachia. And the file cabinets with the newspapers and the files. Just all sorts of information on local families and institutions. We have a archives room that's a locked facility for things that are irreplaceable or fragile, and that's where our high school yearbooks go. We have school yearbooks that provide a wonderful slice of life, as you saw in some of the pictures of bald-headed people that used to have hair. And not just the pictures, but the ads also really give us a slice of life. So we continue to collect those, and those will be our history, not too far down the road. Our books include wills, deeds, cemetery records, local historic court records, biographies, family histories, city directories dating back to the 1920s, and books of photos. We have bound copies of all of Blount County death certificates from 1914 through 1964, except for the occasional missing issue. We have the full archive of the Merivale Daily Times on microfilm, and the Merivale Enterprise, which was published from 1906 to 1980, and all the earlier newspapers dating back to mid-1800s. So you can come look at those on our brand-new microphone reader. We just had our old record one replaced, and we're just getting trying to come to new one. Somebody said that history is about the important people and genealogy is about everybody. And we think our local history collection is the perfect combination of history and genealogy, because everybody has a story, and it's easy to see the significance of your story when you're looking at the local level. For example, we have a paperback-bound volume memoir by a lady named Lucetia Tool Anderson. She was born in 1907. And she wrote a memoir where she describes living behind an old downtown post office just across the creek here, and having to go across a footbridge to get to West Side School, East Side's, West Side School, East Side School. You know what I'm talking about. Where poor Craig and then the Boys and Girls Club is. So it gives you a perspective that makes you thankful for people that have given us things like bridges. And you, it's hard to think about what a lucky mess Merivale was when you've got a creek that goes, makes a complete loop around the hill, and everybody has made it. So you don't even have to think about that, you just go. Ollie Keller, some of you may know who he was, died a couple of years ago. He was born in the Six Mile Community, and he retired back to Blount County after his distinguished career as a football, college football coach. And his autobiography gives a lot of information about the Six Mile Community where he was born, as well as Scratchankle, which is the neighborhood he lived in in Merivale. Anybody know where Scratchankle is? It's the Seabour Roadside of Everhill. So there's just a lot of local history, once somebody tells their very own story, and, and we like to save those. Blount Journal, the Genealogy Society that has an office here, publishes this twice a year. We have bound copies going back to the 1980s. And here you'll see a picture of Alcoa's first municipal building. They write about things that you just aren't gonna find anywhere else. Kathleen talked about Foothill's Voices, and this was our second volume. We were gonna do it again last year, but the virus hit, we hope to do it again next year. But in the, the second one, there was a very carefully researched story of three men in Merivale, a merchant, a doctor, and a gravedigger, and it tells their story of the 1918 flu pandemic, and it is so interesting. And when this came out, we had no idea what a timely thing that would be. So these are available to check out in the library, and they're available for sale. So as Kathleen said, we preserve information, we collect and organize things, we respond to requests for information. If you saw the story in the Daily Times, I think on Memorial Day, about historic football being donated to Merivale College, Melinda responded to a request for information, provided some of the background on that story. And it's not unusual for us to get that kind of request. But we also do outreach, so there's gathering and organizing information, responding to requests and outreach. And the publication is one form that our outreach has taken in the last few years. So besides the Foothill's Voices, we also have a writer-in-residence, and he has republished some things that were published privately, and like this, is a story of Bert Garner that Woody Brenner wrote, I think in the 80s, and this was republished with original artwork, it's really nice. And this is about Civil War memoirs of Will McTeer. And again, it's got some nice pictures in it, and these are for sale or to check out. There have been interviews done with Vietnam veterans, because those people of my vintage are maturing and aging, and we're willing to catch a while that can still tell their stories. This is an ongoing project, volume one and two, volume three is green proofread right now, and after they finish that, we'll probably do a bonus edition. During the pandemic, while we did some work from home, I was able to write a book about Merivale as a lost country years ago. And this was a follow-up to some projects I had done that involved walking tours. It just sort of naturally grew out of that, so I was able to put those ideas and thoughts down while I still remembered them. And it's got ads and maps and some original drawings, and again, for sale and available to check out. We're very excited about what we do, we're enthusiastic, we enjoy it, and just want you to get a little taste of what we do. And these are things you can look at after the meeting, and there are also things on the table out there, including the Letters to Santa. I don't know if you've ever seen our Letters to Santa Christmas tree that we have. Okay, so the, the letters are in an archives box out there, look like those, you can look at that. Any questions, please come see us and ask us questions.
My husband tells me I am chronologically challenged. And when Andre said we could have 10 minutes, I said, "Sure, sure, we can do that." And he says, "You don't have to worry about 10 minutes." So I'm, I'm leaning that way. And thank you very much. Be sure and look at our things, including Dr. Kobe is out there. We'd love to have you come out and go talk to more, we have so much more we could've said, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Who talks about, I mean, what an incredible library recap, in each category, each area. And I'm so glad you're coming in and talking to us about it, letting you know what's going on. Can you, are you gonna scroll back on the pictures? Can you go right back to the beginning?
Just a moment, yes, sir.
We have a link under the YouTube.
Oh, the first one. Sorry, I'll get the right one in a moment. Yes, I want Miss Susan to see. Join the rest up. Tom Taylor. Mary, you were...
Wait, is he both?
That's Marty Wright. Can you get see?
It'll scroll again, I don't know.
I think every day looks like themselves, except Ed.
Yeah.
Except Ed. I can't even remotely look at it. Almost right there. That's Tom Taylor?
That's Ed. That was Eric.
Who's that?
And this is the beginning again. This is Tom.
Yeah.
It's Tom. Yeah, I can see him.
Thanks so much.
What chance do you still have at? Because I know I couldn't wear that, but I was really focused.
Quick question, Liz, how many other libraries have seed catalogs? Any?
I know Edie Fisher, Blount County, have one. There are a few, there are a few, yes. I can't, I don't have them all.
Ladies, thanks again. They really do an incredible job. If you go back there, they even give tests for boat licenses and whatever else is going on. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And you can spend all, all day back there, but then just listen, it's really fun. Okay, and I'll be quick on my report. We did meet with Merivale College, and I'll let Roger talk about that. I met with a volunteer, Ron Halter, who has worked in the library before. About three or four years ago, he came up with a new design for the book drop, and Cynthia Spitler suggested I talk to him, so I did. I went back and I sat there for a couple days. And I went back and I sat there for a couple of days watching the book drop and see how it works. Do you all need to do that? We get, all you have to do is sit there for 10 minutes. We get 50,000 books dropped at the book drop a month. And I thought they were kidding when they told me that. And they pull those cards out every hour or more. It's just unbelievable what's going on. And when you look at the report from Andre, you'll see that we do 700,000 checkouts a year, which is unbelievable. So obviously those books have to come back. And, or maybe not. It's not all books, it's books and periodicals and tapes, but unbelievable. And the thing is underwater part of the day and the books drop on the concrete floor. And so we've got to do something to correct that. And so that's one of the things I'm working on. And I met with Chris Sorrow from an engineering firm. We're taking a long look at a talk to Mirabal City about what they can do to help us redoing the book drop and also the county. Because it just, it's not the way that we should be working at this library right now. It's not what the quantities that are.
Put the crop at the bottom. The corny is okay, but.
The problem was that it was forgotten. So it was added on and the height differential from outside to inside is off.
Sort of like the sewer hook up in the bathrooms.
So you can't get the cards underneath the book drop. So the books drop on the floor. A lady or someone has to go back there, pick them off the floor, put them in the cart. And then the cart puts onto another shelf cart. And then from the shelf cart, it goes on the shelf. And I mean, it's ridiculous. It really is ridiculous. And we have to do a better job on that. So that's one of the things that this next year we need to work on.
And just know that some work was done by Chris, you know, in some of the earlier, you know, work. When we were taking a look at, you know, some of the expansions of the library and redoing the library. I mean, there was a whole little mini project around the handling of those returns, including, he had done some investigating of automated systems that are available now and all that. So Chris is the right person.
I brought him in and he had sat there with me for 15 minutes. And we, it was crazy. And the water's dripping outside.
Yeah.
It's just crazy. So anyway, so that's my report we need to work on. You'll hear a lot more about this in the future. Any questions on that? And what we've done is we're going to put that in as part of the downstairs. So Chris was doing it as part of the downstairs with bathrooms and sources. So we'll get on that right away. And he promises me that all of those are up on the top of his list now, number one. And so we'll be moving forward on that. Okay, Andre.
Everyone has had an opportunity to read the report. Any questions? Oh, come on. Any question? One question? May.
We're going to talk about the.
I will go over. Okay, so what is it? There are a few things that we need to cover. What is it? I have on page three near the top, if you are looking at the amended version now, it says, under the returning to 69 and a half hours library service, the second set of bullet points, the second bullet point, no charge for reserves and no charge for overdue items. There does need to be a discussion on whether or not the board would like that reinstated. Now, I would like to share with you that yesterday I checked our revenues and to date, or as of yesterday, our revenues came in at $111,563.16. In December, when we were reporting to the county and vaccines hadn't come out yet, so we had said that we were going to be lucky if we pulled in 78,000. So we are not even a, we're not operating at full hours. Our library, our meeting spaces have not started. I mean, they're picking up, but this is a down year. And we have already made more than we thought we were going to make, what we projected for next year's fiscal budget. So we're looking good. We're standing good.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, what is it? There has been recommendations made and earlier discussions about keeping the reserves and the overdue items without charge. And I would like to say that the generation of goodwill that that brings, as well as the reduction in staff interactions, the tension that staff has to say, I'm sorry, you can't have this. And the removal to of the, it becomes an access barrier for some families. What might be $5 for us isn't an issue because we've got internet at home and we've got books on our shelves. A lot of our families don't. And so by removing that, we believe, and I talked to Liz and she has shared that a lot of libraries are actually seeing by the removal of this, they're actually seeing a lot more in terms of donations. So.
So can we remove it for the rest of this year and then reevaluate it at the end of the year?
So the end of this fiscal year?
No, the end of the calendar.
Okay.
So that way you'd have six months into next year to see what it would be like without fees.
I like that idea.
Andre, just when somebody borrows a book and let's say they don't return it, they lose it. How does that?
We still charge for that. We still charge for damage. We still charge for the loss of an item. And there's processing fees that go within it. What isn't being charged is the fine. So, and nine times out of 10, what we find is that during this time period, we're getting better return rates as well. So it is maybe a little counterintuitive that, you know, we don't have to punish people once they realize that, you know, we just want them to get it back. They have a natural motivation to go, hey, I know that I want stuff to be there, so I'm going to return this. So when I want something, it's.
How much money did you get fees, late fees from?
So fines and fees have always been combined. And because of that, it looked like it was $80,000. I think this year we raised 36 in fines and fees together.
It was low.
Yeah.
So you're almost comparing apples to oranges.
Exactly, exactly. It's so very different.
So Colorado State Library has done white papers on this. And the other research is like ours. And if a lot, a lot of research shows that people who are trying to kind of dip their toe into the fine free pond, if you don't just want to jump into that, is certainly, we've had some libraries look at just making fine free for their juvenile materials to start with because that is a population that is directly dependent upon the adults in their house. To get those back. And so that, that seems to be for people who kind of want to get into the foray of trying to see what it would look like and what it might feel like when actually going with the juvenile materials. And then you find all those.
And Hometown did that first. And then they eventually went to all their fines.
Is it harder to keep track of who's doing what and what books, what level the books would be?
No, because I mean, they're cataloged as juvenile materials. So when they come back, they probably, you all may, I don't have a huge sense of particular fine for like, it's different for juvenile materials, right?
No.
But when they return it, it's a juvenile material. So they would know automatically, you know, probably step back.
So what's your thought on purpose? Your words, one way or the other?
So did you make an announcement that you're going to do this or are you just going to let this?
I don't think it would be wise to make an announcement.
So just leave it.
I personally like it, you know, the six months, especially right now, being a fixed seven hours a week. So you do have limited time where people can return potentially. So I'm like, I don't see a problem with, you know, until the end of the fiscal, of the calendar year.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion for that?
I will, on my own.
Second. In all favor of eliminating all fees or penalties till the end of the year? I think we'll look at it.
Yeah, it's for rate fees.
For late fees.
Not for Dan.
Yes, over fees, overdue fees. And can I just say, can we say January 15th? As we get through holidays and crazy stuff.
Let's say to the, to the January.
I would be interested in how, I'm all for how we're going to replace that $80,000. You know, it's good to talk about that it'll bring in more donations. And I agree, I think it's a barrier, but how do we replace those funds that are going to be done away?
And will it maybe only be half of that? Because you said it was combined with late fees and data in books and you're still charging for, and I don't know if it's a 50 to 50 ratio.
Right now, all I can present to you is, is what, you know, has been documented in the white papers and things like that. What I can do between now and when this period ends is I can look and see. I mean, we have other revenue streams. And I would say that, you know, there's potential for them to grow, especially if we can get one of the gaming room space. We can get that project up and completed, then that's another room for rent.
I'm trying to get updated data too, because we have, we've had someone collecting anecdotal data from our fine free libraries to see what the feedback has been. Some of them have reported, but they're not just donation dollars. And it's something to do with the psychology of making someone pay a fine versus the voluntary action of paying a fine will give more money.
Yeah.
The National Public went fine free two or three years ago. So I've reached out to see if it gets updated.
And I could see almost even from the, you know, financial, the, I'm a slow reader, you know, and I have limited time. So it's just one of those things, I'm like, sometimes knowing that it's only a two week checkout, I'm like, I might just not do it, something like that. Or I'll extend it one time and then that's it. So, you know, like I know my debt is a little bit like that, so. I don't know. I see the benefit of that.
The data is great and I think it's a trend. It's been a lot of the work done. I just want to make sure with our budget, particular budget that we're working with, this doesn't make us pull away from another area and then, you know, past January 15.
So I can say that the way that we've been operating since, at least since I've been, as here as deputy director, every year we have given a substantial amount of money back or had a substantial amount of money go back into our fund balance. So, and the last two years, no, well, not the COVID year, year before that, we were actually, what is it? I think we actually brought in $234,000. So, you know, that was including fines. I think it's doable is what I'm getting at. We have, we have, because of all our changes, one of our biggest internal changes is that we have the young lady who is called our catering coordinator. We have put her more in charge of and thereby giving a dedicated focus to the cafe. And we are seeing that really reap the benefits in every way, in terms of training, in terms of customer service, in terms of product quality, the supply, you know, and what is it? The Rotary, I've read my report, the Rotary wants to renew their annual contract. I would not, I would be surprised if she can probably increase that. But I will start seeing if I can get actual numbers.
You all pay a collections agency, I'll send them.
Yes, we do, yeah. And I've got the data on that, the comparison of what we bring in versus what we're paying.
Can you have that for us for the next game?
Yes. Now, what is it? It will be data from pre-COVID times?
What is your budget for, for, just for next year? For data?
I think $1,100.
That's it?
Yeah, we're interested in that we're going to be staff hours dedicated.
And that's what we've worked, so we've done all that and I've got it all. It'll be pre-COVID though, which will actually be. So what is it? Yeah, you'll find that it's almost not worth doing. So, and it comes because of the labor hours of our staff. I'll have that data in the next board package.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We've had a discussion. Do you want to read it?
Stephanie Thompson made a motion to remove all overdue.
Need to talk, speak louder.
Stephanie Thompson made a motion to remove all overdue fines and reserve fees until further discussion at January 14.
Okay.
Lauren seconded.
All of the other motions, ready? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Your second thing there, your second piece was for charge for reserves?
Was it, we used to charge 50 cents for reserves.
What does that mean?
It is just if someone made a request, we would.
No, I was, I was sorry. Listen, now we're talking about what a reserve law we would charge 50 cents.
No, no, that's to say, okay, I can't, I think I can answer that question in the sense that, and staff that are here, you know, speak up if you, if I've misstated this, but I believe that the reason it was originally implemented was because, you know, people get excited about placing things on reserves and then they don't pick them up. And prior to Tin Share, the library consortium, that helped us set up a statewide courier service, it would cost us money and the library would just eat it. And now, so that came and placed out coverage, but then we started getting through our MOE relationship. The state started the statewide courier and then the, I think the fine just stayed. Is that? Yeah?
Well, I think it was started because we needed an income stream. I want, I would be, I would be one.
Do you know what year?
How much income did we get for?
It was 50 cents in Idaho.
Yeah, but I mean, does it generate a hundred dollars a year?
Oh, no.
A day?
It was probably more than that.
50 cents a day?
We have.
Just to put it.
Yes. So when we did this, we just, it's, you're, someone's paying to get first dibs access. On like many times.
Then we go against everything we just said. They're moving the access. I mean, you know, we have to pick and choose. We want it to be accessible for people or not.
But now, when they put something on hold, they put it on hold for a period of time. If you don't pick it up, that's a lot of right.
That's right.
And it's not for a week. It's for like two or three, two days or something?
No.
But before you incurred a cost to have it sent here. So if they didn't pick it up, you still.
Yeah, I could see that.
But now you don't, we don't incur a cost.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, there's, there's, okay, it's, it's not 100% free. I was going to say, you know, we have to have, we have to have membership with the consortium. Then there are certain, like there are certain charges that.
So it's not for.
It is, it is not.
Somebody want to continue this?
But there was a difference between putting a reserve on something we had and asking for something through interlibrary loan.
Right.
Yeah.
We were trying to 50 cents to put a hole on things. We had, were we charged for interlibrary loans?
No.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think we should.
Well, I'm thinking about curbside.
Right, I was trying to say, it's so much easier now, because if you put something on hold or if you put something on reserve, I mean, if it's full up at the front hall, you know, and it's like.
Yeah, I'm going to choose.
I think a mission or a move is it. I think a mission or a move is it.
Well, right now, we don't have it, yeah, yeah. So we would just continue, we would not reinstate it.
Maybe just review it again when, in January. How about it again then?
Yeah.
Thank you. I had a question on page.
We did.
Page two.
That's all right.
Page, page two, you, you are asking for closing the library on the 30th of July?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that for a second?
Okay, so what is it? The staff for a very long time have been asking for active shooter training again. And between those requests and now, we have had an update in our security systems, both our camera system. There is a SARAH system, which stands for something. But it, what it basically is, it's a panic button system. And what it does is we as a library can, can determine certain buttons, if you will, so that if I'm in patron services and Kathy is in children's and Kathy's having an issue, she can hit a button and it can go, depending on the button type, it can go just to staff. If it is a public service announcement, like say there's a tornado coming in or say that there's an active shooter, every single commuter, computer monitor can broadcast this message. So one of the things that has been meaning to be addressed, but yet hasn't, has been the implementation of this SARAH system. We have access to it, but it is not fully set up. And so during this training day, we would be brought up to speed about how our security now fits in with the, how our security now fits in with the county security systems. And they would explain the SARAH system. Then we would go through the active shooter training. Then we would, they would go. Then we would decide on what type of buttons would work. And then when we would let Dawn know, and he would have that created and then we could implement it.
Sounds like you need the data now.
But that's the, okay, let me just throw this in there. That's the first week that the teachers are back in school. Do you have meetings and stuff going on that day of year?
I have checked the board, there was nothing on that day. We have no staff taking holiday, at least at the moment that I checked. It's been two days, so, so there's no telling. But at that time, there was, there was no one.
First football games of the year also.
Can maybe get a tranche added? Are you guys going to use it as an opportunity for a little bit of fellowship too?
Absolutely, yes. So that is the first part of the day. What is it? We will expect that, we'll start at nine. We'll expect that the, the sheriff's department will be done with their training by about noon. We'll have lunch. And then from one to five, we will be working on, right now, a, the, the staff have been asked, what type of training do they want to do? Team building, do they want to do, you know, what kind of training would they benefit from? And so we're getting that.
If you're providing lunch for your employees?
Yes.
I thought you were cooking.
I think it's great.
I move that we do it.
Is there a sign? All of them? People have signs on the doors and somewhere around the.
Yes. It will be, it will.
At least a week.
Yes, yes.
Got a couple things on that.
Yes.
And you were watching page two. You talked about the, the book drop and Scott Pullen and what tip signs, what's that connection?
Okay, so Scott Pullen works with the City of Maryville and he is in charge of making sure that all signs within the City of Maryville meet the requirements. He came out and it was beautiful. It was at the same time that we were reviewing the book drop. And he got to see, within a 25-minute time period, we had three times where at least four car lengths of cars were trying to get in to return books. He was like, I cannot believe the volume. And I was like, yes, we are loved. I was very proud, sorry I didn't hear that. I was very proud. What is it? So what Mr. Pullen and I are working on are getting the requirements for the allowable signage and design that will go on the, or over at the learning lab, so it's identifiable, and then to address the book drop. So what is it? The small metal signs, apparently because they're metal and we're in the day and age that we are, people like to take them. So there are, there are required.
It's like a line.
So what is it? It is in very early stages yet. Tomorrow I will reach out to Tip Signs again and I will ask him to come out and provide quotes. But he and Mr. Pullen have already been in discussions to make sure that they're sure on the requirements of, of what is allowable.
So this is a sign issue and not the project that Chris.
The, the book drop, I don't even think I mentioned the book drop in this one. That's, that's. I did.
The drop in the learning lab, huh?
Okay, it was just the book drop, so, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
Other question concerning the SkyPod project?
Yes, sir. Okay, so the Rotary tables have been ordered. Right before, or on my holiday, I sent an email out to all parties, which are Mike Caffrey from IT, the county IT. He's the consultant. I have reached out to Joe Huff with Parks and Rec regarding the slabs and the location for the tables. And what is it? I will be, now that I'm back in town, I will be following up with them so that we can start things. We're all ready to go, but no one knows who to start or where to start first. So apparently, everyone had their own individual task, but that email was the first time they all were talking together. So now it's in the coordination phase.
So where, where does it like, what's it at?
It was Springbrook and the other possible one is MLK. Uh, it is, it is, yes, yes. But the, the, so we're doing it in, in steps. The tables that are being installed now are through the Maryville Rotary Club. And then that's a grant cycle within itself. Oh, no, that wasn't. One, yeah. Well, this one is, because this one's due on the 30th and I'm writing that one. The MLK one is, definitely. I don't think the library one is. I think that's just a straight install. I think she raised the money on that one. So before we get too far, and I don't want to cut everyone else off, I wanted to bring everyone's attention to page three, the section returning to 69 and a half hours of library service timeline. Starting today, I would like to, or today I would like to make the request that if the community survey is approved, if we could utilize our integrated library system, which is our, our catalog, and send out emails to our active cardholders. The last time we did this survey, the board did give us permission to do that. There are limits on how much that you can, how many you could send out per day. And I think it's something like 10,000. The person should only get it once via that avenue. We are showing, we're going to be truly promoting this. But that is a request, I'd like you to just, I'm planting the seed for now. We haven't started talking about the community survey, but that is something that I'm hoping we can take action on. So.
When we did the last survey and you implemented the same, you know, roll up that way, right?
Pretty much.
We yielded about 2,000 responses.
My brilliant.
About 2,000, yeah. So it was successful then?
Absolutely, but it seemed to work.
Yeah, 2,000 responses a day?
Oh, no, total.
Total, but that's, that's pretty large.
What percent was it?
No, that's for a survey.
For a survey, that's pretty good, yeah.
I mean, how many would you, would you set out?
So.
At the retail level, we expected 5%.
So here's the thing. So we have, currently, we have about 50,000, about 50,000 active cardholders. So we want to at least ensure that they get that. There will also be print or hard copy surveys that are available in the library. And then we will also be sharing within our social media and our full print press kit, so. Sorry, who wants to ask you the question? So I keep looking.
So somebody do the math. 2,000, 50,000 is what percent?
50%, 4%, right?
Four, four to five percent, right? Which is, which is good for a survey like this. And especially it was a lengthy survey. I was surprised.
This is also a lengthy.
It is almost identical.
But it's just very long. But I don't see any at this speed.
In the, we're going to do that, the focus group?
We have a, one, one section is under representative, under representative groups to see why they have difficulty accessing the, the library, what are their issues? And get into their perceptions in the library, how the library might improve, making those services more wide and known to them or more accessible.
But.
Instead of having a separate.
No, I should do both.
Yeah.
No, who, who, who participates?
Yeah, you've got different.
Yeah, so you've got. You've got age.
We've got age.
Yeah.
Let's add grace.
Blake, can we turn it over to Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Blake, are you only checking three and then the, I have a second question? Does, what do you value most about the library? Check three and you have 20 some items.
You could check, I mean, you could change that to check as many as you want, because.
We thought in the analysis, I think it started, we're going to, by doing, giving them the three best, kind of, and how difficultly it really gives you a better.
So here's the thing. Question two asks about a value. And then question seven talks about the importance to you. And then question eight asks you to rate them. So I think between the three, you get a good.
You remember from two to eight?
Okay.
What is like individual, so you take each one separately, so you're just kind of.
But we can remove the check up to, well, I mean.
I wouldn't do it, I'd leave it alone. I mean, I think you need to, you need, it's almost a forced choice question. You need to know what is of most value. Because I could sit here and check every one of these things. And that's not very helpful information to you.
That's right, that's right.
But by forcing me to pick a few, I have to think about that, I have to reflect on it. And then I have to commit by checking the box. And so I think it's more helpful information.
But what happens if you get the same amount of people for each category? So if you get 100, let's say, yeah, I agree with the high-speed internet. 100 say availability, availability of meeting spaces, 100 of something else. And across the board is pre-even, then you don't have any. What happened?
Actually, it's not like that, it wasn't like that in the last survey.
No.
It could arrange like the size and diversity of the books and collections was 55%. I used to work and study 50, but then it dropped down to even among the top ones, high-speed access to the internet, 23%. And then there were others that are even lower than that, 23%.
That's the results from.
Can you give us a copy of that?
Yes. Would you like that in the next board packet or before then?
What do you have? I mean, I'd like to see it.
I've seen it, so.
Yeah, it is in the notebook that you.
Who were around saw it. Yeah, and it was very helpful.
So the, just, just for clarity, am I putting it in the next board packet?
Yes.
You go ahead.
I'm trying to make the board packet smaller for you guys.
I like the fact that this survey, you did this the last time, that has a few, very few open-ended, because you know, it gives people a voice. You know, it's sort of like, what else do you want to say to us? And it sort of frames it in a way that's useful to us. But we need to hear what people have on their mind about the library. And sometimes they will not say that if they don't, if, if your other items that force a check mark or a forced choice or what, you know, sometimes that just doesn't get at what people need to say. So thank you for keeping those, I think that's helpful.
That's great.
And I think it'll be really interesting to see what they say about these hours, which we do need to find out what people care about. I mean, because, and not just now, not just because of COVID and now, but we, I mean, we should probably be asking that on a pretty regular basis.
Was that question up there?
I don't know, no, but that's not.
This is, this is, it is, we always had our hours of operation, you know, I believe, I, I don't think. Hey, when Casey got here, did she change the hours?
Same hours of operation since this building has been open, open the old building.
Okay, so, so that's the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, give me, because one of these options doesn't have Sunday on it. And it'll be very interesting to see what people say about that. And some, and one of them has a really long Sunday on it, and that'll be interesting as well. It's a great questionnaire.
Okay, any other questions on the survey or?
I do want to share with you that Robert and I have already talked and, you know, if it got, if it gets approval, we wanted to be ready to hit the ground running. One of the things that we were going to, so your packet was already out to you and was already an amendment, so we weren't going to do it again. So I wanted to clarify that in the beginning of the community survey, we will be saying that we want you to think about the library service from 2019 to current day. And then we have one question about COVID. Because COVID was our anomaly, it did show us a lot of good things. We have added curbside in as a service. We have updated it so that it's an accurate reflection of our services. But that said, we didn't want people to be hyper-focused and us get a snapshot of what coming out of COVID looked like. So I wanted to share that with you.
That's good.
Do we want to continue to offer curbside? And does that use a lot of resources?
So, so right now, we're not, short answer, we're not 100% sure. There are elements of it that we really like. It is a real value-added for our population who has mobility issues. There are concerns with how are we going to do it with 70 hours? Are, are, you know, the, the volume that we have? Are we going to, how are we going to make this work? So, you know, we're still, we're still looking. We're not planning on getting rid of it. But it is under constant evaluation.
I don't think you can take it away. I, I think you've made it so convenient for people. You know, there are just some things that, once you give it to a customer, you cannot take it away.
That's right.
And I suspect that that is of that kin, you know, it's.
So the question is, you can't take it away, but how do you make it seem?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And so, you know, we are figuring that out. I wish I could give you a more, you know, um, with that. Yeah.
I mean, a sound of snort. I mean, that, because it is a tough one. You know, because, you know, sometimes the explanations will never satisfy people that have gotten used to it.
Now, the good thing is, is that, what is it? Right now, we seem to be able to hold to our two days. And then if we call, we're telling patrons, well, we're, we're not going to bring it out to your car if it's not a Tuesday or Saturday, but you're welcome to come on in, it'll be ready for you. And they love that as well. So it's not the same kind of service, but it does mean at least two days of the week, we can bring it out to your car if there is, so.
Then I've done the call and then coming in and picking it up and it, it's, it takes me a minute. I don't have to go search for it on the shelf and see if it's back there, that kind of thing. So, I mean, just.
Do you still park in the same place or you?
No, I just parked in the parking lot. But, I mean, it was quick, I just had to run in and get it and that was it. So it was very clear. So I love that.
How sophisticated is the service and does volunteer work?
So at this stage, because there's privacy issues on who's checking out what book, we wouldn't want volunteers to be part of that. And it's because, you know, people read what they want to read and they shouldn't have any concerns about other people finding out what that is. Yes, but we are.
We're professionals.
Yes, exactly.
But if they tell they can.
I have a code. Well, exactly.
But you keep any statistics as far as like what the percentage of the usage?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
And how that changes, once we, the library was open, how much, you know, it, I like to see the trend. Is it going to decrease or is it the service that, you know, we are, that is going to stay that popular?
It has, it has tapered back since people are going, getting out more now. However, the volume, so the number of requests might be down, but the, the number of items circulating is still quite high. Because you can get up to five items in one curbside request. So, but we are collecting that data. And again, in an attempt to make this something that, you know, you guys are really coming to cover with excitement and enthusiasm, I have not included, I have not included stats this time, but next month you will be getting, we'll be getting a very late board packet. So, yeah, but you will be getting stats, so.
Ready to go, send your packet.
All right, do we need to vote on, approve on the survey?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion on the survey? Captain?
Sure, I have a second.
I'll second.
Oh, David.
Make sure we include the information that we talked about.
Yes, we will take.
Add amended with race.
Yeah. And then I also wanted to say, we will be adding a question about curbside into, like we'll be adding curbside into the, in question number two where it says other. The first other, we will actually list curbsides. And I'm just going over my notes to see what else. Oh, and in the focus areas, we want to add, when they meet, we want to present some of our printed materials, promotional materials, to ask questions like, are you aware that these exist? Have you ever used them? And what are your impressions of them? So we will be maybe those changes.
So, and the motion needs to include those three things, right?
Okay.
With those three things.
Including the focus groups and the funding for.
Right, right, yep, and the curbside.
So, these focus groups, are they mirrored in the world where people can watch from the outside?
So that is one of the things that, and I'm glad that you asked that question, because that was something that Robert and I had talked about. You know, initially, we're thinking, have it here at the library, it's easy, we know where it is. But then we were thinking, well, if we want to get these, we need to go to where the people are at. And so if we want to go to educators, perhaps it is best to see if we can ask them if there is a space that they normally go to and we go there to them. If it was here, it's not a problem at all recording it, both visually and audio because of our setup. But other places aren't going to have that. We could get a camera or maybe an audio. One of the things that we were thinking about was having it where. So the options would be, it's here and we record it. Or it's at a place that that group meets, you know, naturally. And there we have an audio recording. Anna would be a scribe and then the, someone could be there to listen. There would be no audio, there would be no video so that the people did not feel recognized or exposed in sharing their concerns. And people would be able to listen via Zoom.
So could you go to like the senior center or the market?
So some of the places we were thinking is, is the SkyFi for the entrepreneurs. They should be fine. Now, for parents and the youth, we were thinking here at the library.
How do you get releases signed off on the kids?
Yes, yes. What is it, we were going to ask the chamber for non-library users. We figured that that should be a, let's see, for the underserved population, we were thinking either MLK or we were thinking United Way because they've got a, a wardroom.
And I think we should do the United Way because underserved can, can be made. And, and, you know, if, if it's an MLK, it makes it look like it's just a race thing. That's part of it. But it could be ethnicity, it could be age, groups, you know. So I like the idea of a neutral place like United Way.
Why, why do they have to record these? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, we recently done some focus group studies with similar populations and they did not want to be recorded and they wanted to remain anonymous. Where we gathered the data in a very anonymous way, but, and we also felt like we got better feedback from them than that. So I guess my question is, why does it have to be recorded?
So, what is it, I guess, you know, that is what I'm used to and it's because you then have something to go back and refer to. However, if you've just done one, and I know that the chamber's been working on one, I'm going to that. But if, if you would like to share with how you captured that data, you know, because that's basically, we want to make sure we capture what is being shared with us. And so it feels safer to just go recall, you know. Yeah.
It is, you know, specifically like we were asking questions about race and our LGBTQ stuff and folks didn't want people in the community to know that they were part of that community or that, you know, they're African-American, they were afraid to speak out about police officers or something, you know, giving very, you know, examples that may not apply to these folks. But I would like to consider giving them an opportunity to remain anonymous.
Okay.
We did a modeling group studies, but, and it takes a lot of work of collecting the data to be able to present it to someone in a way where we're keeping it anonymous, but.
Well, one of the things we were going to do is that if it was recorded, before the recording started, first what Robert would share was that, one, he would ask if it would be recorded. Everyone would sign those releases. And we actually said that if somebody said no, that we wouldn't record and we'd go just on scribe. The other thing, though, was that each of them, instead of, you know, it being Susan and Stephanie and Jesus, it would be participant one, participant two, participant three. So they would identify themselves so that there was clarity and, you know, the train of thought that was being recorded. But that would be it. Do you think that that would be ample with?
You would have a hard time not telling people ahead of time that they're being recorded and showing up. And given that question day of, they still may not sit, the hunter will even say no. I don't know, I'm trying to be sensitive with some of the things that you're trying to get out of these folks if you really want honesty back.
And, and, and we do, and we do.
Traditionally, though, most focus groups will be recorded, but they, the participants are made aware of it.
Made aware, yeah.
So that could be done in our recruiting phase, we could say that.
That's what we did, so we let them know ahead of time that we would be recording it internally, just for our consultants to take their notes together and put out. But some people opted out of it because of that.
Okay, gotcha. We, when we were talking about, we identified certain individuals that would help us and act as recruiters for the populations that would be part of our focus group. And what we can do is make sure that the recording element, I mean, and, and maybe we just do, see with Zoom, we can capture, we could record just that and just turn off all, you know, cameras. But basically, I want to make sure that the board is okay with whatever we decide to do and if you have a preference. I know that if we could say that we record it and it will only be used internally, I would love to do that, just to make sure, you know, that Robert has everything he needs because the next opportunity is four years down the track.
What do you think about it? Any more thoughts?
Personally, when I did reports on focus groups, it was always very helpful to not only refer to the notes, but also to go back and listen to, kind of looking for how people were feeling and sometimes this. You catch up, you catch up feelings and the nuances that you wouldn't get if you were just looking at nothing.
That sounds like you couldn't do that on Zoom, but you could do that through camera.
Okay, any more discussion on this or move ahead?
We have a vote.
Yeah, no, we want to vote on this.
We need to get started.
Go ahead with it.
You have 70 seconds.
Okay, all up there?
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
You want to talk about the strategic direction or did you just, did anybody read it?
Yes.
During the point talking about it? Okay. How about the statistics at the end were very interesting, please take a look at that. And one of the things I think we need to look at in the future is why the library cards are going down. The numbers that are being issued are going, are reduced every year. Okay, how about the financial report? Any questions on that? Any questions on the budget at all?
Yeah, insurance.
35,000?
Yes, that's our liability with the county that's over the year.
So you pay 35,000?
Yes.
Well, it comes out of the budget. It's budgeted and it, it's just every, I think, every department.
Every department has to share.
Has to share.
County players, I have no idea.
A lot.
A lot, yeah. It's always a way, a lot.
A lot. Well, you have to.
It's down.
I know that.
So.
We have thousands of people in this building every day and that's a lot of liability.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Our homeowners association pays $17,000 for life. For 350 homes, about 600 homes then. It's, it's horrendous.
It is crazy. Yeah, it is.
No, I know. Okay. Let's go to some reports and then we'll get to the sex offender policy and those other. Okay, Angela is here from the foundation. Angela, do you have a report for us?
Yes, but it's a very brief one. Basically, Anjame came and shared the same things with the board that she shared with all of you this evening. Andy came and shared with us the same things that he shared with all of you this evening. And Stephanie Thompson came and shared with us the same thing she's going to share. And once we finished talking with them, just getting an update on what's going on with all the transitions of COVID and leadership and all those sorts of things, we had time for routine business meeting where we approved our bills and where I corresponded. The only note that you only want to, to take note of is that John Dockerty has been six and a little more years, he creeped past his term limit to get a new person in office as treasurer. He is finally stepping down from six years of being a treasurer after six years. And we appreciate it. Grant Dockerty will be taking his place. So if any of you know John and want to send him a personal phone call, if you can, we are looking to try to arrange a shout-out call-up for his publicity for him and a little bit of love in July to say thank you for hanging in for six, seven years.
Thanks, Angela. Bruce, you're up next for the events.
I'll try to be as brief as I can. We had our June monthly sale, which is our last monthly sale. We're going to go to the quarterly sales next. We made, we had a good two-day sale, which is $6,100. In September, we'll go to our, our next quarterly sale, I guess September 9th, the weekend after Labor Day. And we're going to get back into the, our pattern of having quarterly sales. The community market is going strong. We're having, I think we have 17 to 24 vendors out there every Saturday. eBay continues to perform strongly, it's down a little bit. It's, but it's still one of our major money contributors and we are, we're trying to keep those people happy. We did have our annual membership meeting a week ago. We, we elected three new board members. And they are going to be in position July 1st. And we approved the, our next year's.
Can you tell us their names?
Oh, sure, Jennifer Spurko, who left here, now working for the Girl Scouts, but she wanted to keep her feet wet in the library. The new woman named V. Barham. in the library. Uh, the new woman named V. Barham, who, uh, came in from Washington State. She's had, she's had experience serving on the, the library. She was at up there. She was on the board. She's very energetic. Last but not least, my wife, Lisa, is going to be on the board. So it's a twofer. We did it, we, like, uh, we did approve next year's expense budget. Um, we have lots of volunteers returning. I think Nicky had like seventeen, thirteen in the last. Yeah, so the volunteers are coming back. The book, the book donations are also staying steady. And we're talking about setting up for a teacher's sale in, uh, probably, maybe it is like mid-July. Uh, there's interest at our last sale amongst a lot of the participants in having a special teacher's sale. So we're looking at that. That's pretty much it.
That's great. I, I walked in the library yesterday and, uh, Anne was hauling this huge truckload of paperback books. Can you talk about that for a second? I couldn't believe it.
I think that, uh, Fred first, this was her mother's, um, Harlequin romance collection.
Go away.
Everything what, yeah?
Collection, yeah.
Everything what?
Well, she brought in thirty-two boxes, yeah, water inside boxes. Uh, of those, probably fourteen were the Harlequins. We're, we're not going to process that. We, uh, actually, we have, we have an online, um, vending there, but they sell well.
The most excitement down amongst the eBay people, because a lot of these will be bundled up and put on eBay. Diane was excited because apparently the early, early Harlequins had a red wash on the, on the.
Pages.
Pages. These are red ins. These are red ins. They were excited.
And they said they'd go for big bucks. I couldn't believe it. And then I was like, hey.
Yeah, yeah. Our eBay people, hell, hell, philosophy that we're, about any book that comes through, it's weird.
It was great. Thank, thank you, Bruce. Okay, Liz, it's time for you.
I don't have a lot. Um, this is, you all met in June already, so you already sold the June report. I did add, um, the information about the Recovery Act and tech grant that was just announced, um, last year. Uh, and so we are, normally we have those, a fifty-fifty match in tech grant, but our libraries can take advantage of, you know, to update their, their tech and all your software. Um, we received money, of course, from, uh, the Recovery Act through the state library agencies. So we have two and a half million dollars, um, to, that we are combining with the tech grant. And without, there are a lot of different categories. There's technology and software, like the typical things they would, the tech grant. There's also money for website design, if our libraries want to be able to do that. Also money for print materials. Also money for digital materials. Also, um, I'm forgetting something, library furniture and equipment. Um, there are.
Would you like some?
Um, the old state library archives have some as well, so I don't want any, thank you. Um, so we, uh, we have put that application out. The, the difference with that application is they will submit it to our regional office. So if you know, we have that first, then we will submit it on to the state library archives. And there is a match, but it is significantly reduced. It's not fifty percent. It's anywhere from five to twenty percent based on the level of library. So for you all, it would be twenty percent match on any of those categories. Um, I can't remember what the max, I think the max is twenty.
The max is.
For, yes. Some of your grants. Um, yes, that's the max. Um, and yeah, it's a really great opportunity for our libraries.
When is that, that application due?
Almost the twelfth, I believe, this month.
What do you plan on submitting for it or have you guys thought about it?
I have, so as soon as that came out, I sent it out today. I've been planning team was like, dream big. We'll talk about it. But we haven't talked about it yet. So, yeah, I'm writing next word packet.
And I just want to.
We'll get that too early.
One more thing. I'm going to do a little plug for the trustee certification program. Um, with the tech grant, that usually comes into play, the number of trustees that have taken the certification program. And with this, should the requests exceed the amount of funding when we start making cuts, that will come into play. So if you would like to register for that and you haven't done it yet, um, you can let me know. I can, let Aunt May know. She can let me know. I can get you registered for. It is always available right up here, um, on every board report and your password. It will take you to a trustee lib guide, the Tennessee State Library Association. State Library, um, lib guide. Uh, and the password is T N lib guide. It's all one word and it's right up there. But if you want to skip that step and you want me to do it, I can do that for you and make it that much easier, um, to get that done.
Yes, I mean, what's that percentage?
I don't know yet. Um, you're, you're certified by, and it will count Dawn also.
Yeah, we got two that, you're going to have two new people.
No, it will count you because your official term is not over until June thirtieth. And we are giving anybody that's on a truth this year, so.
It'll be your final act of, yes.
Yeah, I don't know that it will come into play, but I'm just telling you if, if your request succeed that amount then it will. So, but you would need to get it done by your pertinent, which is not much time. But it can be done. You can do it online, um, on your own. It's ten modules. Um, they're short places after each one.
And you can fail.
It's, uh, you really can't.
I was like, no.
You can't fail, that's true. Um, sorry, just to, and that's really Dawn's update.
Yeah, we done this week.
That, that was different.
I'm going to get the statutory ready. It'll be done this week.
I would like to say we'll be speedy, as speedy as we can, but we're dependent on people.
I, I really, like, I had two, I, my laptop, I just stopped working Saturday and I wasn't able to finish the last two. But that last week, you know, some occasion, I'm like, I'm going to get it done since I've been through this one and I'm doing it just like that, but it will be done this week. So.
That's. Thanks, Chris. We got the old business, uh, we, we already discussed the old business, right? The, the community survey of focus groups?
Yes.
So we're done with that. Let's, let's move on to nominating committee. Uh, Dawn or Jesus or anybody, be him.
Uh.
Uh, I would want to, uh, be on this nominating committee for this next term. And I would like to nominate Andy as our chairperson. And I would like to nominate Stephanie as our assistant chairperson.
Okay, are there nominations from the floor?
Anybody wants to?
Yeah, anyone wants to?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two nominations, uh, do we need to vote?
Yes.
All over there?
Hi.
Okay, I have to go and vote. Well, any other nominations?
Sorry. Thank you, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yes, thank you. And Stephanie.
All right, let's, uh, switch over to new business. Strategic directions, we, we, we read, looked at that. The sex offender policy. Has everybody read through that? Does anybody have any questions on that? Are you okay with this?
Yes.
All right, if you want to put this, uh, the only question I got was on the D part, I, the first page of the restrictions of, of this section should be effective upon the mailing of the notice. I wondered if the, the mailing shouldn't be registered.
That is actually the law.
Mailing only, not registered?
This is actually the law. That is the law.
And it's, they could have, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, because trust me, I tried to change that and I was like, look at me, I'm just changing the law.
But in the policy, in the policy, felt like it needed to be registered later than where it says the notice may be mailed to the offender's address or, so maybe a certified.
Exactly.
Or registered.
Something that shows that they actually got it.
Why?
Why? Because we're stopping the community of the library. If they, if they say they never got it, we, I don't know what you're talking about.
Are we going to keep record if that?
Well, um, if I can just weigh in real quick. Um, what I was, so this is the, the letter of the law. Um, this is the policy that the Knox County Public Library typically has in place. Um, what is it? In conversations with, um, so we had an incident which helped bring this to life and the need for it. Not, no one was in danger. A parole officer came onto the campus and began to talk with staff. Um, of course, I was at lunch. That's how it always goes. Began to talk with staff about concerns about an offender who came out, who had a very violent, um. Yeah, um, against him. And he had just gotten out of jail and he was making the habit of coming to the library. Originally, this law, um, said that library directors could make that change and it also, um, it also said that, so if the, the parole officer could tell the offender, you're not allowed to go there. And then, you know, the director doesn't allow it. He would provide a name to the director and the director. Well, that's, he's not allowed to say that anymore. Current legal cases have come up and the parole officer could, cannot say that. So what this parole officer did was come and he was in the letter of the law. He came, he, um, located the, the gentleman, took a picture of him and he was at the Skyfly tables, which also happens to be right next to our children's department. Um, he came in, he talked to staff. We immediately got on the phone with, um, the mayor and with local police to find out what direction we needed. And from that, this policy and the shaping of it has come into play. So the procedure for this is that, um, we will let the parole officer know what our policy is. When, um, an offender comes out, uh, because it used to be the parole officer would say, okay, now that you're out, if you go to the public library, you have to, you have to tell them. Well, the impression I got now is that that's not, is that? It, it's kind of muddied now.
I think it depends on the, because in the case of saying the parole officer's telling them, they can't do, and they have to come. There's a possibility they'll tell you.
That's right. And so this parole officer was very concerned and he said, I said, well, you know, I stated the law the way that I remembered it when it said library director. And he goes, no, there's been changes. So, um, we came up with this letter and this notice and that's page, I guess, the last page of it. So that would be where my signature's big and blue. Um, and it basically says, you're not allowed on this campus. You do have access to library services digitally. You can call, you can notate someone on your account who can return items for you, but you are not allowed on this campus. Um, what is it? When, if this is approved, I will call the parole officer and I'll let him know of our policy. And, um, he says that, uh, he can give us a name and an address. We can mail it out to the person. But for instance, the gentleman that started this whole thing, he's homeless. He doesn't have a home. So I couldn't mail it. So what the officers that I talked to said is that anytime that happens, if we become aware those sex offenders on the polis, uh, is on the campus, we can take this notice, call the municipal, um, city police. They will come out. We will give this letter to them and they will present it to the offender. The offender will be made aware of the surfaces that are available to him, um, or her. And, uh, what is it? Uh, then he will be, he or she will be added to a no trans, no trespassing, um, list or book. And then if they are on the property again, the staff have been instructed to just notify the police. They will come and they will take care of it. And it'll be a, um, criminal charge of trespassing. So that is what I've been instructed. I have to admit personally, there's lots of torn feelings because we're human and sometimes people get on that list that maybe don't deserve to be on that list. And then sometimes we really need that list.
Has an attorney reviewed this policy?
Um, not yet, no.
Liz, it's, it's a law. And this, what you're saying is what the law says.
And honestly, this is verbatim from what Knox County did and it went through. Because it's already been. So I was acting, but if you, because honestly, the only, I made, like, the blunt county changes. I put in our email, but nothing that would change the process itself.
What Andy was saying is mailed to the offender's address using registered mail. So you would have a record of, that they had received on that, uh, policy right here. I noticed they mailed to the offender's address through registered.
I think that's all.
Avoiding receipt of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah.
So this is a, so it's a blanket ban of everyone on the registry.
At will, and it's not a total ban. It is just, they're not allowed on the campus. They can still get an E-card. They can still get a full circulation card. They can nominate someone who is not on the registry to come and pick up their books, return their books. They just can't.
And if they're ever removed, like the last statement says, then all they have to do is notify the director, the removed from the sex offender.
Do you, do you have some, some concern about that or, with the blanket?
Well, I mean, any, I mean, I don't know. It's, it's hard. I don't, I, I don't know about Knox County because they're not in the, um. They're not trusted, but I don't, I don't have any libraries that have done a blanket ban. I have them utilized in law on a case by case basis where if, if they knew the parole officer or something. I just haven't.
Well, so, and, and.
And I don't think you want to be in.
No.
Dedicate resources to stop doing research.
That is the, the number one thing. We are not. And that is one thing that I've told our staff at first. I was like, our job is not to police. We are not going to go to the register and look for them. But if a parole officer comes in, then we've got this in place with nothing, well, and if we have nothing in place, is that a weakness?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so I would think just, yeah. So it's not going to be like we're going to have an announcement, you know? Um, and again, you know, there's statutory situations that maybe someone, you know.
But we don't want to do anything.
Policing, that's exactly right.
Well, but I think, but I think the way Anjame is talking about it is if the parole officer comes or if the police. officer comes, or if a police officer comes and says this person is, and then we, then that's when that is going to come into play.
That's right, and if, and if you'd like, I can definitely, um, send this over to the county attorney to make sure there's, you know...
It needs to go to all the funding bodies.
Yeah, I think, I would think.
No, but I mean, before, before it goes all the funding, yeah, to have one legal review if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, Angeline.
I mean, I just want to make sure we're putting a policy that is actually, and we're annotated, we're citing code, you know, making sure we're citing the right thing, we're protected and not having the wrong thing come here. And also, you know, I would like to know how you're like Chief Chris, how you're going to roll this out to them, are you meeting with them to share this with them?
So what is it, so as soon as this happened, um, I called, um, Amy Cowan, she discussed it with the mayor, um, and then they immediately reached out to the City of Maryville Police, um, and then Amy called me back, um, and, uh, gave me the procedure that they recommended, um, and then, let's see, um, what is it, then I had conversations with the officers, so we have a direct phone number, um, for our staff to call a City of Maryville officer, um, if we believe that there is an offender.
Why don't we tape a listening until the next meeting until you write a copy of your things and move on?
Yeah. Yes. Um, while we're talking about policies very quickly, or about a policy, I wanted to let you know that the, um, library standards, which is, um, you know, the, the annual review of where we're at with our policies, and it is time for us to do some serious reviews of our policies, we are, so it's going to be due by July 15th, so you're going to see a lot of no's, um, but that just means that, um, Liz, you want to just, you know, support me, we're not getting our hands smacked, we're not, it's not a negative, all it is saying is, hey, every year have we done this, and on a lot of our policies, we haven't, so, um, I would like to create a timeline so that, um, the next several board meetings, we're getting those, those policies checked on.
Great.
On policies.
Okay. Stephanie, what's there about the update on the job description?
Sure, um, as part of the search committee's, um, job, we wanted to take a look at the library director job description before we advertised for a new director, Jared Anderson, who's one of the committee members, is, is a lawyer, so we got some free lawyer help. Uh, he did a great job of, I, I think, of, of revising, uh, some of, just some of the key things that, that we looked at, is that categorized some of job functions into general functional categories, so we categorized things, grouped knowledge, skills and abilities into tight groups, reclassified some minimum requirements to perform work into knowledge, skills, abilities and qualifications, addition of several responsibilities already undertaken that were not included, um, in this job description, and we did remove the five years of experience requirement as a library director from the job description, and that was based on input from the staff, because they felt like if we required someone to have five years of director experience, that that was removing the ability for some of the, uh, lib, librarians who head up large branches, large branch libraries, they aren't directors as such, but, um, they felt like that that was removing some of the pool of qualified candidates from, based on this job description. So those were some of the major revisions, and really, a lot of it was just moving stuff around and putting it in, in categories, there wasn't a lot that made changes.
Search committee is really filling a good job, I have, it's not a fifteen, twenty minute job, they're in there for hours at a time, it's, it's really, and our committee members are excellent.
So, did any of you have any suggestions for the description? Any questions?
Jared did an awesome job.
Jared did it.
If it's okay with you, we're, we're just going to go ahead with this.
Yeah, move forward, it's good.
Does it need to be voted on, or?
Do we need to vote on it?
Okay, moving, uh, uh, it was time for, we have some board members that are rolling off, and we were going to be having some nominations for new board members, uh, the only funding body that, that responded is, is Alcoa, and they have put Logan Hill up for another three-year term. The twist is hard, really hard, but we really, we really appreciated that very much, so thank you for doing that, and I appreciate Alcoa for coming through, the other two that I put through. So we have two other members that are rolling off, actually, we have three that, we're talking to one, so we have two members that are rolling off. Two that are officially rolling off, and Susan Schibl and Kathy Hammond, and it's kind of a really sad day today because these two have been incredible boards. Sad for the existing board, it's sad for them, and we just really appreciated the incredible job that you both have done, and, and thank you so much, and so I'd like to give you a little something for the, for the library board, and thank you for all the work.
I love this library, we don't get to do this easily.
Well, we're going to be calling.
I need a break, you know, I need a break, but, but, uh... But, but I'll probably come back as a friend or something, I mean, I'll just, you know, I'll always have my, you know, my foot, you know, my little toe, you know, once I retire after next year. This is a fabulous resource and the staff is bad, so I'm just so proud of this, and I'm really, really proud.
Well, I want to say that, um, I can, I can definitely say that, uh, both Casey and I, and I know that Casey's moved on, but you guys worked with Casey for a long time, and, um, you know, there were a lot of challenging times, but your leadership, um, through those times and your dedication and caring to this library, um, has always been greatly appreciated. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Andy, can I give just a quick update on the search committee?
Absolutely.
Uh, and you can chime in here in just a minute, uh, just kind of want to give you all a little bit of information about what we've been working on, uh, we've got the job description, we've established a salary range based on information and looking at libraries that are comparable to ours across the state, uh, the range of eighty to a hundred thousand, uh, we're working on job ad requirements and we'll be getting that out, um, pretty soon. We are going to post it on the American Library Association site as well as a lot of other, um, ZipRecruiter and LinkedIn, and there's a lot of other sites and the regional and state library association sites. Um, Andy was going to check to see if we might get something in the Daily Times, an article of some kind about that, maybe we would have to pay for that, um, you want to talk about the survey?
So Jennifer from United Way, and I, we kind of worked a little bit on the survey as well to send to, um, all the, you know, the groups of people that we have is the Friends Foundation, the employees of the library, and, uh, you know, there's a, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and Parks and Rec and the, um, funding bodies, um, but basically we want to get the, a, a short survey, ten questions, and just to get them going to really, truly see what's important to everybody, um, as we look to the, the next director.
We passed out the survey questions to you.
We need to make sure the timing of these.
Is you go out with both of them and you'll ruin both of the responses.
So this, these folks are going to take what's important about the next director.
Yeah, so this, they're going to get, yeah, you got the, tell this right in front of you, yeah, so they're going to get a, an email, um, like the, to, that we're going to send to that, that person, that phone contact, and that person, we're going to ask them to disperse it to, um, to like, for the CIO, to the commissioners in there, the Martin Johnson, so it's, it's not just... And we're thinking, um, about doing it, and that might be something we need to talk about when it goes out, but we were thinking about, um, sending it to the libraries.
So we've got to have it quickly, just the characteristics and so we can use in that email brochure. And you can imagine, if you're one of those people and there'll be a lot of them, that will get both, yeah, and you complete the first one, and then you get the second one, where you go is, I've already done that survey, yeah, and then you lose a response, so it may be, your timing is, you know, I, I get that, but then you may need to delay yours a month or something like that, so that there's this separation.
And we're ready for the surveys too, Dawn, and, and we are going to, just the subject is going to be the.
Library director.
So.
Yeah.
But it's still going to be a survey.
To the average person that, you know, comes across in their emails or whatever, it's just...
We'll talk about, we'll work on timing.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's fixable.
Yes.
Well, and I'm just wondering, are you capturing stakeholders or you want community with this as well?
We're really just looking at.
Stakeholders, yes.
Librarians.
Yeah.
A lot of what that list that you got there. Now, what if your survey, if it comes back and says something different than what's in that job description?
Well, we're going to include that job description and then we're going to include a little section on qualities, characteristics.
Like the interview questions, things like that, okay.
Yes, yes.
They're very broad, they're not...
Yeah, gotcha.
So it looks like, as far as I'm understanding this, that, um, you know, the library employees are the largest, um, group outside of all of this, so if, if you're talking about contacting less than, well, fifty, fifty people, and that's including all the library details, if you say, and you give them...
I was thinking like one week would be.
We said, yeah, uh, we want to send it out on June 26th and then almost three weeks for input till July 17th, but we can back ours at, we need to, I mean, as far as just giving them two weeks instead of three.
Yeah, because we talked about two weeks.
We did.
Yeah.
When we first started talking about it. We did say two weeks.
We need to get next week.
And I wouldn't do them, I wouldn't do anything less than two weeks.
Yeah, right.
But your two weeks would probably work for you, because the problem, what we know about survey research is, people who are going to respond are going, will get on.
And everybody here is going to get one, so please make sure you respond.
I can tell you the staff one.
And this is our way to make sure that we do, we are listening, um, this is not just, you know, me saying, we want this person, this is what we think is important, it is a, you know, getting that.
And some of these stakeholders that have very unique thoughts about all of this, so I think it's a great step.
Now, the only, the only consideration is the homeschool association, when you say members, how, how big is that?
It's huge, you're...
I said members of the board you're talking about.
Okay, so, okay, so if it's homeschool board slash members, not board and members, then... Okay.
The chamber contact needs to be Tammy Ford, I can give you guys that email address.
And I think Joe Parks, uh, Joe Huff from Parks and Rec, that email might be off, I'll check, I'll double check that for you.
Our hope is to post the job August 1st.
Yep.
That may be a little ambitious, but that's what we're looking for, and a deadline to apply September 1st.
Sounds like a good plan, so. Well, we thought if we did it in the ALA, it's a month on posting, so we talked about...
Send it to UT, send it to Middle Tennessee, they both have library director programs.
If you have a good candidate out there, probably.
I will, I mean, I mean, I don't know any, I'm sending it out to all of those to hear
I would think this would be a plum job.
Anything else?
Yes.
Can we just, uh, agree on the timeline, so, because on our timeline, we had July 1st was when we were going to push this out.
That's next week.
So, yeah, so it's not going to be July 1st, so if, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar. So you guys are going to push yours out on the 26th of June, that would, that's what you're, that's Saturday?
Okay.
And you're going to run it to the 10th? Okay, so you close it on the... Okay, the 10th of July? I think the delay of 10 days, because we can, we've already done the finalizing of protocols, we can start reaching out, so as, as long as we can, um, do our push by July, July 10th. That's okay.
Y'all are going to figure this out.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, two board members that are rolling off, if you have this, would you mind giving it back to us?
Sure, I may have multiple.
You should be able to.
We got an archive.
I have a box. You know, with all the notes and all the meetings.
I want to make sure that everyone gets this, this isn't going to go away. Yeah, we are.
Can we have a second, that I kept?
Second.
All, all the posts. Thank you very much.